Town of Harpswell. We have a lot of people in the, who have come for various items on the agenda. We have one, two, three, four official items on the agenda, one of which will probably be tabled. So I would like to begin with calling the meeting to order and asking our vice chair to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all right.
All right. Next item on the agenda is to introduce our board members and to declare a quorum. I'm actually going to start with Margaret, our planner.
All right. I'm Margaret McIntyre from Ors Island, and I'm the Harpswell Town Planner.
Christine Donovan Hall from Ors Island.
Dan Hoback, Ors Island.
Amy Hybel, Harpswell.
Lori Rice, Great Island.
Courtney Snellings, Ors Island. I'm just going to say something at this point because I was on the Zoom meeting last month, unless all of us, and also whoever is up here at the podium speaks directly into the microphone, anyone listening at home may not hear. So I just want to bring that out. I sometimes couldn't hear. And I'm like, hello, I can't hear. But we do have folks who count on looking at our meetings on TV or referring to them, and so it's awkward, but I just want to remind all of us to do that. Can you, Mary Ann, can you hear? Okay.
Good. Thanks for that reminder.
Yeah, yeah. All right. We have a quorum. A quorum is four members. We have five members here. I'd like to invite Christine to participate fully, and also just to let anyone know who's watching, that we are looking for another planning board member, an associate planning board member. So if there's anyone out there in TV land who's interested in joining the planning board, we'd love to have you apply. Applications are, I think, online, and made through, the appointments are made through the select board. Christine has been a really dutiful associate member. She's come to almost every meeting. She does her homework, and so I hope she is, I would recommend she be moved up as a full member. So that is that. The first item of business is Jeff Janvern. This is an old business item. This is an application to open a, a commercial shellfish buyer's business. This is, we looked at it last week, or not last week, the last month, yeah.
Seems like last week.
Seems like last week. And we asked for additional information specifically about parking. We asked that the applicant provide us with a map that shows clearly where everything is. We do that so that the codes office and the planning department in future changes to an application has a, an official record that's both visual and verbal, so we can go back and check against it to look at any changes that may have been made or that are proposed to be made. Before I open it up, I'm going to ask the town planner if she has anything she'd like to say about the application.
Sure. Before we get into the application, I just want to note to everybody that this is being streamed on Zoom, or it's a hybrid meeting. The intent, I think, from the select board is to, is to have planning board meetings and other possible meetings in the future be hybrid. So this is kind of the first. One, it's not hybrid for any specific reason, other than we're kind of, the town's at that point where we have the technology. So something to look forward to, so you can participate even when you're out of state.
We used hybrid meetings that we met on Zoom. I think most of us were on the board then. It worked really well, and in some ways...
But that wasn't hybrid, that was just...
No, it wasn't hybrid, it was just Zoom. And in some ways, it worked better than these meetings because it had, it just had some attributes that we don't get here, but, so I'm glad to see the hybrid.
Yeah, and as far as this application goes, the applicant brought us an updated site plan that was available for anybody to see on the internet, on the town website. He also brought in, I can't remember what day, but he brought in a driveway entrance permit from Van at the DOT. That, I believe, made it to the website, but it came in not at the same time you guys got all your information. So you got a paper copy of that, and it's also on the website. We also got, just yesterday, maybe, so this did not get distributed to everybody, but it's information pretty much that you already have, which is that they got a septic inspection with some notes.
I actually handed that in like a week or so ago. That one, the one that I, the DOT one I just got two days ago.
Gotcha. That's it, that's it. I had it backwards. But this is all information we already have, so that's really helpful. We also got, for communications, emails from two of Butters. One is for Jim Hartford, and one is from Elaine Downs and William Fall. Do you want me to read them?
Sure.
Okay. From Jim Hartford, Margaret, I received notification for the meeting on 7/16/25. Use of the word "to reopen a wholesale shellfish business" is inaccurate and misleading. The business has not operated in eight years, and the previous operation was never permitted. As one planning board member correctly pointed out at the beginning of the last meeting, this application should be treated as a proposal for a new business, and should be, should meet the zoning criteria required of a new business. There seems to be a tendency to think this is, this as a grandfathered situation, which it is not. Has a proper site plan been submitted yet, as requested in the last meeting? I did not see one on your website. And from Elaine, hello, Margaret, I hope you're doing well. I just want to question how the significant, the subject of this application review is being stated on the announcement of the July 16th meeting agenda. It states, consideration of an application to reopen a wholesale shellfish business in an existing building. How is this, how is this being considered as reopening of an existing business when the business has not been operating in eight years and is no longer grandfathered? In addition, there, per the, there, per the planning board, there is no site plan approval for the business on file from eight years or longer. The wording of the subject of this topic on the meeting agenda should clearly state that this is a new application for a new wholesale shellfish business, and as such, the site plan should meet all specifications for a new business proposal. Has the town received notification of the main DOT approval of an entrance permit for Jeff Janvern's driveway? My understanding is that the approval needs to accompany Jeff Janvern's application. Thank you for your consideration. So some of those questions have already been answered, and some I feel like we'll answer tonight. And those will be part of the property file if anybody wants to review them.
First of all, my business was established in 1989.
Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
I'm chairing this meeting.
Okay.
And so I will call on people to speak.
Okay.
We're happy to have you here. We're happy to hear from you. Would you please state your name for the record and speak directly into the microphone, and please continue.
My name is Jeffrey S. Janvern. I live at 34 Harpswell Island Road. My business was established in 1989. Bought clams there for over 40 years. The reason for my business being shut down for that period of time was that my father died. And going through the process over the last few years, that's why that was not run. It was existing. I feel I should be grandfathered in. I've done everything that I possibly could for the planning board within my capabilities. Besides the traffic, which my neighbors are going to complain, when they say the clam diggers are coming or going, it actually slows the traffic down when you slow by my building. And any code violations or any violations that I might be in, I think that my neighbors should look around and look at themselves. But I'm going to buy clams, I'm going to continue to buy clams, and that's the way I feel. I don't know what else to do, what else to say, but we're a fishing community, we're a dying breed. And I think that's something that should be passed, and really, I don't think I should have had to come here because back in the day, there was no site review or whatever. And I have always been permitted, and I have to get permitted by the state of Maine to be able to buy shellfish. My building needs to be inspected, I have to be qualified to run that business, and I always have. So any questions, anybody want to ask about the right of ways, which I have, can do anything for all purposes on that, on the deed that I sent in, pretty much, I should say I'm all set, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Margaret, what is the timeframe for grandfathering?
I don't know.
Something grandfathered in perpetuity?
I don't know the answer as far as site plan review goes. I think if you go through site plan review and you are approved, you're approved as long as nothing changes. Kind of like the corner market, they reopened as a different business, and we told them, you don't need to come back to the planning board as long as the business doesn't change.
But this never got site plan review.
So I talked to the former planner, Mark Ironman, about this very subject. He said, I thought it had gone through site plan, and I looked at the codes file, I looked at for the planning file, I searched our online, our, our, our online database. I can't find anything that indicates it went through, so he seemed to think it did. I can't find any records, but it doesn't matter because we're here today to, to approve it, or, or talk about it.
So is it, so we don't know whether it's officially grandfathered or not? Sorry, I missed your conclusion there.
I don't think, I think if it had gone through site plan review, it would be grandfathered.
Okay.
But because I can't find any records of it, we have to go through this process.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Excuse me, ma'am. I'm pretty sure my father would have had a site review, site plan review. I don't think the town would have gave him a permit without something being...
I don't know. I mean, it could have been, like, maybe, because it was commercial fishing, it didn't need to.
That's correct.
Maybe it was considered a home occupation, so it didn't need to.
Right.
So there's different ways that it could have, there could have been...
Right, because I'm in commercial fishing zone one and two.
Yeah. I think, though, it's safe to say, this, this has not been grandfathered. The use may be a use that was there before, but this site plan has not been grandfathered. This is the first time that we've seen it. So I just want to make sure to get that on the table and clarify that, okay? The use may have been there, be pre-existing and been there before, but that's not the same as a legal grandfathering. Just, just to put it out there.
I have one question for Margaret. This is, what he is proposing here is a permitted use in a commercial fishing two districts. Is that correct?
The language is marine-related services.
Okay.
That's right. The way that we usually do this, and this can be a little bit confusing, is I ask to hear from the planner, then we allow the applicant to speak, and when you are finished with your presentation, then the board will be free to ask you questions. We can discuss, the public is always welcome to come up and speak at any point. If you'd like to speak after the applicant has spoken, you're welcome to do that, and then the board will deliberate amongst itself. So, go ahead, and are you, are you complete?
I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much all set.
Okay, okay.
I just, I just remember how, I remember how it was for me last month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You're sure to be back up there again, and you'll have to restate your name because we won't remember on the TV land. Okay, anybody from the public that would like to speak?
Do we want to start with the submission requirements?
I wanted to just see, open it up to see if anybody from the public wanted to say anything. Because you always remind me, include the public. So I'm including the public. And you don't have to get up now, you can get up at any point in time.
When we're reviewing this.
Yeah, as, as we review. We might hit something that, that you feel you need to speak about, and you can get up, and don't feel like you're interrupting us, just get up and do your thing. Okay, so there are several steps that we have to go through here. They are, they can be confusing. We will, I will try to explain what they are as we go through. The first thing we do is we determine as a board whether or not this conforms with submission requirements. The planning board, or the, 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 the planning office, applications for site plan review have to be submitted on certain forms, and they're provided by the codes office, and they have to be complete. So we have to review this to make sure it's complete. The board can waive certain submission requirements, and there are four waivers that have been requested. So what, what I am going to do is just ask the board to take a look at these waivers that are requested, and then we'll determine whether or not we want to grant the waivers. There are 14.1.3, names and addresses of property owners within 500 feet. The town, this, this requirement has actually been satisfied because the town provided them. The name, registration, and seal of the person who prepared the plan, this is not applicable because the applicant prepared the plan. The direction of existing surface water drainage across the site, this requirement could be waived since there's no new development on the site, nothing, there's no earth moving or things like that. And then the location of the nearest fire hydrant, that's 14.2.11. I assume that, and this says that the submission requirement is satisfied because the nearest dry hydrant is on Doughty Cove Road, so I think we're to assume that there's no, no fire protection, other than regular fire protection that would come in the tanks from the fire department.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to waive those, those submission requirements.
Can I just say so moved, or do I have to go through all of them?
You moved.
Okay.
You could say it's, it's written down here for you if you...
As, as written on page two, the waivers, 14.1.3, 14.1.9, 14.2.9, and 14.2.11, all are written down and can be, can be found easily.
Thank you. Any second?
A second.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
So Courtney, were you saying that the application is complete?
I was, I was saying that we...
Granting the waivers.
Yeah, that these waivers would be granted. Sorry. That's why I never make the motions.
All right. So we find that the application is complete, given the waivers that we have just granted. Now we go through another step. This is going through the findings of fact. The planner prepares findings of fact for the planning board. When she does that, she's looking at the site plan requirements, and then giving us feedback on how each one of those site plan requirements has been met or has not been To add further confusion, what we do is we make a motion to find that the requirements are complete. That gets seconded after, and then we discuss. We don't vote on the motion. We just make the motion, it gets seconded, and then we go through the site plan requirements one by one and discuss them to see if they're complete. Sometimes the discussion is very long because we have, we have things that we think need more clarification. Sometimes they're very short because it's obvious that it's complete. So I will move that the planning board finds that the application of Jeff Janvern meets the approval standards of Section 15 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, based on the following findings that are incorporated into this motion by reference. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan, seconds. Now we go into discussion. First one is 15.1, dimensional requirements. And if you, I'm going to read these through, and if you have a discussion, you want to talk about it, then bring it up.
Okay.
Utilization of the site, 15.2. Adequacy of the road system, 15.3.
I think for 15.3, we could add in that he got approval from the DOT.
Okay. The standard has, is met since the site will see a minimal increase in traffic and is located on a DOT state aid highway. And the planning office received on July 11th, 2025, a letter from Van Terrell, MDOT senior technician, saying that the department will neither issue a permit nor object to proposed use of the entrance so long as it is not widened beyond the existing paved apron that currently presently serves both the dwelling and adjacent home business. Any expansion or addition to the existing building and any change in the use of this access will require additional permit approval. All right.
Perfectly vague, yes.
Maybe we can talk about that when we get to the discussion part, right?
We can talk about that right now, if you'd like. This is the time.
Yeah.
This is very oddly worded, may I say. The attorney looks like maybe it isn't oddly worded, but for a regular person, it is. Will neither issue a permit nor object to proposed use of the entrance. Why not just issue the permit if, if the requirements are followed? It just seemed...
I think he's saying that he doesn't need to because it's grandfathered.
That's what my lawyer says.
Yeah. And also, it makes it clear, it cannot change.
Right.
It has to be exactly as is, so if there's more traffic, more business use, expansion of the business, that's not grandfathered, and then that has to go back before the DOT.
Right.
So as long as it is, so that's why the wording.
Correct, ma'am.
Why not just say...
It's legal.
Why not just say, we issue a permit so long as these rules are followed? I just, it was so bizarre that I needed to bring it up.
I, I asked him the same thing, and he said, that, that's the way it is. I go, ah.
You either get one or...
Don't get one, but that's what he told me.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to state your name if you're going to step up there. This is not a give and take in terms of...
I'm sorry.
You've got to state your name. And Dan, I'm going to call on Dan.
Okay. I, I think the confusion is that if this were a new road cut, it would require a permit, but because it is not a new road cut, it does not require a permit. But he's saying that if we change that, then we'll have to go through the permitting process.
If you change the buildings or all the things that they stated.
A pity you didn't write it, Dan.
Yeah.
However, that said, this is why we need site plan review, because that driveway entrance has now been stated as...
A fact.
A fact. It's 49 feet. It's on the record, it's in the file, and this is why we do site plan review. So if that changes, we can go back into the record, look at it, and say, aha, this has changed. That's why we don't do things just by word of mouth, right?
Yeah.
Okay. 15, were we on 15.4, access into the site?
Yeah, yes.
All right. The access into site, I wanted to read this. The planner recommends this standard is met based on the following findings. The site can be accessed from Harpswell Island Road, an existing DOT maintained road. The site can be accessed from Echo Shore Drive and First Road, existing private roads, and the applicant did present us with a deed that showed he has the right to use the roads, and it doesn't appear that there are any limits to those rights, except for the width. And then the speed limit is 35 miles per hour in this area, and site distance from the driveway is over 250 feet in either direction. Is there any, any other discussion on that point?
I think we have somebody that would like to speak.
Okay. We have some folks from the public that would like to speak on this issue.
Yeah, I, my name is Tom Noche. I live at 18 First Road, and this concerns the flow of traffic. If you're going to permit this, currently, he's got this coming in on Echo Shores and exiting through his driveway. If traffic gets backed up, that's my only exit, only way in and out. First Road has been washed out due to storm two years ago, and no one's bothered to fix it. So I have an existing medical condition, and I have to get out of there quickly. I can't be blocked by clambers with trailers. That's my only way out. So all I'm asking for is for him to reverse the flow. He comes in into his driveway and exits on Echo Shore.
He seems amenable to that.
That's all I have to say for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
A minute, all right.
I have a follow-up question, too.
Yes, sorry.
My name is Jim Hartford. I live at 9 First Road, and one thing, the statement that speed limit is 35 miles an hour in your net, yes, it's posted that. Nobody goes 35 miles through there. The only people that do are the people that live there. And that, most people are going 50 to 60 miles an hour or more, and the town has information on this. Two years ago, we came to the town and asked for some enforcement out there, and we've gotten nothing. And they have records of what the speed actually are out there. And, you know, its base approval on a 35 mile an hour speed limit is, it's not reality. I like to just go out there and stand, or take a walk up and down the road and feel how safe it is. And then, questions for you, Jeff.
Can you, sir, I'm sorry. Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure, thought I was, but...
Well, when you were turning, it wouldn't be picked up.
Jeff, would be, like, the number of vehicles, the type of vehicles that'll be going, coming to your business, like, how many people have to come to your business on a daily basis for you to be viable, and how many do you expect? And what, are they trucks, cars? I mean, before it was people pulling boats. So your site plan doesn't really reflect, I'm wondering if your site plan reflects the reality of the type of vehicles that'll actually be coming onto the site. And, just as a point, 33 feet is not the dimensions of the, if the map doesn't work. I mean, you only have 50 foot down there, so it's got to be the total distance from building and stuff.
Jeff Janvern, pretty much they use...
Thank you, I'll turn, please, Bart.
A little wiggly.
Yeah, I think one of the legs isn't, yeah.
Jeff Janvern, pretty much they come in with their pickup. Some of them do use their skiffs. It's hard to say what I'm going to get on a daily basis. The price dictates where the clam diggers go, but I could say a dozen, maybe? I don't know yet. But I'm willing to do what my neighbor suggested, that they come in through off Route 24 and go that way for him, too. But it's, it's hard to say.
Thank you. Let me ask another question. The gentleman that just spoke said that your measurements were off, and by my calculation, if that's a 50-foot space, then you don't have 33 feet... have thirty-three feet between the parking areas. You actually only have twenty-six feet. So, which is correct?
I went with the thirty-three because the code enforcement officer said I could go as wide as thirty-three, but I could make it minimum, less. It's a gravel driveway, ma'am.
Right, so if you park two twelve-by-fifteen-foot vehicles within that fifty-foot right-of-way, and they're both in there, you only have twenty-four feet, which...
I don't believe they're in a, in the right-of-way, ma'am. It's on the side.
Uh-huh.
But you've also got the buildings there. The clam buildings within that fifty-two.
Okay.
So, it's the clam building, two parking bays, and then a slot over is what can go through there, so that's probably like, you know, twelve feet.
So, what we're, what we're hearing here from the neighbors is that the fifty, is that the site plan that we are being shown may be inaccurate in terms of measurements.
Okay, but I went by the thirty-three, I guess.
So, excuse me, sir. Did you go by thirty-three on the basis of something that the code enforcement officer said you could use?
Up to thirty-three feet.
Up to, did he measure it?
Uh, we measured a part of it, but that's what I put down there, ma'am.
Okay, so it hasn't actually been measured on the face of the earth, and you're not sure that that site plan is actually accurate in terms of the dimensions?
On the parking, maybe, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you.
But I don't have to use those, those parking on that spot. I'm, just put them there because of the thirty-three feet. I could use it if I put it less, twelve feet.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I, I'm understanding what you're saying. Does anybody else, could someone explain to me?
I think he's following the parking space requirement.
Right.
So, he's putting in that requirement, thank you, to try and meet it, and then just trying to back into it. That's what...
Right, ma'am, that's what I was trying to do.
That's kind of what I thought, but if the building is in the fifty feet, then those numbers aren't, they're not matching up.
Sorry, we wouldn't be able to use these three right here. Does the three next to the building are in question at this point?
I think there's only, is there three?
It looks like three is.
Oh, okay. Maybe I meant to do two. But, I put three down there by the thirty-three.
What I think, though, is that the people for the house typically pull in beside the house, don't they? They don't parallel park right there. Is that true?
And, yes, they, I parallel park by the house sometimes, yes. That's where I park to.
Because if you pulled yourself in next to the house, you wouldn't have to parallel, do the, those two parallel parking spots next to the house.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes, please, Dan.
Okay. Am I correct that all of the parking that you've laid out there...
Excuse me, guys. Can you not talk at the turn of this again?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm assuming from what I'm seeing here that all of the parking for when people are there load, I was gonna say loading and unloading, but unloading, that as they are parked there, there is no obstruction to either First or to Echo Shore's Drive. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
They pretty much just pull up next to the building, and they're not there very long at all. It's not even really like parking.
Okay, so there's...
And they, they have enough room for another vehicle to go beside that if, you know, they need to.
And since there is, this is a one-way coming in as requested, as requested by the neighbor, then there is no obstruction of any traffic that would try to go the other way beyond through the parking area. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can we back to this for a second?
State your name and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Tom Noche again, Hoxwell, eighteen First Road. One, the cartoon drawing here has the parking, one of the parking spots goes right across, halfway across First Road. If you, it's right here.
I see the red, I see the red.
Right, right.
And it does look like it goes across First Road. Maybe we could get some confirmation.
Maybe, maybe, I mean, I don't know what the usual rules are, but usually engineering drawings aren't done by, with crayons?
No, we, we accept hand-drawn...
Okay.
We don't have to have a professionally done. It can be hand-done.
Okay, but just so you know, that that's the way it is. And, are we gonna get to something about water quality at some point?
We'll, we'll be doing that in, in a little bit.
We're just...
And I just want, I just want to say, and we, we do prefer engineered drawings, but we also realize that we're dealing with local folks here, and so we're not absolutely strict about it. It always works...
Well, this is a business. It's not a...
It always works in everyone's favor if we can have accurate drawings.
Yes, yes, okay. Thank you, thank you.
We also try not to do undue burden. As long as we can get the information we need, that is sufficient then.
Jeff Janveren, if you look on my map, my property line probably goes about five feet into First Road. It's a gravel driveway.
Interesting.
It's right here. If you look at it...
I thought we had a boundary survey done here. Do we have a boundary survey?
Yeah, here we go.
Sorry about that. No, no, his, his easel's falling down.
I mean, I, I don't go out into the road, but it shows the line kind of going into that gravel road a little bit.
Well, sir, it's, it's either a road or it's, it's a, it's private property. So, we have to determine, we have to determine what it is.
Okay, that's twenty-four. That's what I'm trying to do. Okay. Twenty-four, so this is First Road right here.
It's, it says First Road, but I'm just saying, it, it shows...
Is it a road of record? Do we have a record? Is it...
It's on my deed.
So, it's, so it needs to be correct?
It is.
So, it's either one or the other. It's either a road or it's your private property.
It says First Road. Alls I'm saying, ma'am, is my property line inches a little bit into that road.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, okay.
On the site map, if you look at it, yeah, the, the gravel road's here, but actuality, my property line goes over a little bit, so First Road should be to the left a little bit more. Not that it's gonna change, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you.
Do you mean the, the road should have been moved over a little bit? It's, you mean it wasn't done correctly? Is that what you mean? Because your property is partly on the road?
It's, it's about two feet on the road.
You can't see that goes through.
Not that I'm gonna change anything or do anything, but...
I'm not really seeing any indication of this on the boundary survey. If someone could point out to us where your property is and where the road is, that would be...
First Road is right...
I'm looking at your boundary survey, sir. This is... Can you see it?
Yeah.
I went on my boundary survey, it was right here, so this is First Road, and you can see where it is. I would not reference right here.
No, you can use mine. It's also on the website.
Sir, could, will you go to the microphone just for a second so that I can ask the question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the width of the First Road that actually does not have your property involved, like, two feet, is how wide?
It's between twelve and fourteen feet there.
Oh, so that's the part that's not at all hung up on your property line?
Right.
Thank you.
So, we're looking at this bound, property boundary map, and it doesn't look like First Road goes, it doesn't look like your property goes onto First Road.
On the Google, though, it does kind of. When you look...
Is that because, is that because there's...
It's not in a perfect spot, you know what I'm saying? It's not...
Well, the boundary survey is a legal boundary survey.
That's correct, ma'am.
So, it has to be accurate.
That's correct.
So, we have to go by this, which is really kind of why it would have been great if you could have done your, your map off of the legal boundary survey, so we really had all the accurate dimensions. That would have been great.
Actually, he does have it here.
Does he?
Look carefully. You can see right here, that line.
I see that. So, it does go over.
It does go over.
It does look like it goes over, sir.
Just a little bit, it's all...
But on this one, if it's following it, it does do a bump up.
Yeah.
In which case, that gets a little question about what happened there, which that's what he's reflecting.
Exactly. Yeah, I see that. So, this is confusing.
Not, not that I'm gonna change anything there, but I just wanted it to be aware.
Okay.
I don't, I think I gave a copy there.
Now, Mr. Janveren, the whole reason for it is because it's a road, so it's traffic, and it needs to be kept clear of a building construction.
Right.
So, if it's property, you could technically put a building into that, but if it's a road, you can't. So, that's why we're just trying to look at the parameters.
Right, correct. I understand that, and I do not plan on doing that.
Trying not to beat you up on this. We're just trying to get a clear line.
Right, I, I understand.
Here's what I think a solution could be as far as the site plan goes. He could eliminate space number...
I think it's six, right? The one, it's a number.
Is it six?
Yeah.
The space that goes into First Road, or it looks like it goes into First Road, and he could just move it to parallel park behind the house lots.
That's, that's what I would suggest, and just take one away.
Yeah, and just move it. And then, as long as the thirty-three really says twelve, or whatever the actual width of that space could be.
Right. He said I could go up to the width of thirty-three. That's why I put the thirty-three.
Right.
Yeah, but it does have to match what's actually on the ground, you see?
Right, and we know that section from the boundary survey. We know that section's only fifty feet wide. So, could we change that thirty-three to say whatever it actually is on the ground? Twelve?
Yeah.
Well, it has to be, yeah, okay.
Whatever it actually is.
Whatever it actually is.
Yeah.
So, the site plan here will need to be redone so it's accurate, right? Because we can't approve something that, that's not accurate. We can, I think Margaret is saying that we could make some changes. I don't know how the board feels about that. Do you feel comfortable with these verbal, these verbal assurances?
In order to get the, we could document it and say it needs, we need to have this done and that done, and in order for us to, to prove it later, right, like we always do, then we, we could do it that way.
As a condition of.
That's a condition of approval, yeah.
A condition of approval.
Oh, to me doing that?
Yeah, before you can open it up for your business.
All right, that's fine. It's just been a long period. I'm looking to get to work, ma'am.
Yeah, we are, you know, we've been putting our time into.
Yeah, I know.
We're all, we're all trying to help you out.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I don't think that should be a big problem to do that, you know?
So, does, I'd like to hear language for fifteen point four, access into the site, to be added on when we, when we go through the conditions of approval. So, could someone work that out?
I think we would be doing that in the parking section, not in the, in the access section.
Well, one is, it, it is access into the site. The entryway shall be from the applicant's driveway, and the exit shall be on Echo Shore's Road.
All right.
And this shall be posted.
Yeah.
Right? This shall be posted clearly. Right? So, that's access into the site, but then, and I also think we've heard about speed limits, so I think we should ask the applicant to post and make sure that the speed limits aren't forced. So, and the speed limit is, what is the speed limit on that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five on that road?
Are you talking on Route twenty-four or on his private?
Which one are you talking about?
He can't do...
So, maybe ten miles per hour? That's...
Say like, four miles.
We like that.
On-site speed? Is that what you're talking about?
On-site speed, yeah. On-site speed.
Oh, no, because he can't dictate the, the Route twenty-four.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about onsite.
As they pull in, that's all.
Five mph, I guess. Is that the lowest they, they got signed for?
Yeah.
Because you don't have much leadway there anyway.
So, and one other thing would be to add signage that says five miles per hour, and get that signage, think about where the signage should be located. I think we can work with the neighbors on that. It doesn't have to be done with us right now, but there needs to be five mile an hour postage of signage posted on those roads.
I do want to say that it's, I'm one of the people who does go thirty-five there, and I think it's regrettable that some people are going faster, but it's not the applicant's burden to monitor twenty-four.
No one's suggesting that. I wasn't suggesting that.
Well, well, the abutters have said that the speed limit is a problem.
Oh.
As if that, you know, that involves this gentleman, but something else needs to be done. Perhaps the abutters, perhaps the abutters should get in touch with the sheriff and make sure that there is regular monitoring. I'm just saying, because you can't, this does not have anything to do with this gentleman as to how quickly they're driving.
Right. Sir, would you state your name?
Yes, yes. Bill Fall, Great Island. Going back to a couple issues, the parking, and then the signage you're talking about, and the speed limit, which we've already been through with DOT and everything, got all the pedestrian signs, slow-down signs in that area because it's congested. But, you're right, that has nothing to do with his problem. That's our problem, but we're trying to deal with it. But, to get a sheriff there to, you know, stay there and, you know, monitor is, we only have one or two sheriffs. They're all over the place, so they can't. And I've talked to them. He can't. He tries. He can do only. But, going back to the parking, we've been there over thirty years. We've seen it all there, even when he had the business of selling clams and stuff. There, as far as trucks coming in, half the time or more, there were trucks with trailers. So, you can't just go by the width of a truck, the length. You have to add the trailer, which could be thirty-five feet, forty-five feet, backed up. So, there could be a couple trucks with trailers with their boats on it, because that's what they're going clamming. So, you have to take that in consideration, that that could happen. I, you know, the claiming business, who knows? It could change, you know? It's, and I hope it does get better, you know? We're all for fishing, you know? But, I want to see, you know, that problem solved. The other thing is, I don't want to see any signage, more signage put out on the road saying directions coming in or anything. We have enough problems when we come out of our driveways and other people. That's why we got the pedestrian signs, slower down signs, because visibility, we have a hard time getting out on twenty-four. And any more signage is gonna block our visibility farther up, so we don't want to deal with that. So, you know, if it's a direction sign, it has to be, I don't know, whatever you do. Keep it away from the people pulling out, especially the clambers going in there. You know, if they can't see and they're pulling out, and a big semi-truck's coming down, you know, we're worried about safety. I mean, that's our biggest concern is safety. I mean, that's our biggest concern, is safety. And then farther on, you know, the other safety, which I don't think has been analyzed enough, is, I know they had septic systems checked, but there's a couple septic systems in that small area, leach fields and wells. I don't know what, there's a, I think a well that's shared with two people.
We are going to be looking at that, at things coming up, so maybe you could hold your comments.
Yeah, well, that's another thing, so. But, um, I think we're just looking for, you know, the safety issue of, of all of this.
I think, thank you. Thank you very much.
If I could just comment, you know, I've been in Harpswell a long time, and I travel all around the whole area. You've got, you know, what was the veggie corner? You've got the post office, you got the problems you're complaining about. I see it too, and it's throughout the entire area, in the summertime especially. You have a lot of out-of-towners who do not abide by the speed limits. We just have to live with them, because how do you control them?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying yes or no on anything, it's just a general statement in living here in Harpswell, what I dealt with too, trying to get out of the post office, it took me ten minutes to pull out.
Uh, Bill Fall, Great Island. No, I understand that. But, I mean, you've been here long enough that the traffic is like ten times worse, all year long. It used to be seasonal, but we live up, I mean, we're right on Route twenty-four, we've seen it. And so it's not the same as it was eight years ago when the clams were there. It's totally different.
We understand.
We understand.
We do.
Why we live here too.
And sympathize. I think a lot of it was COVID, and, I mean, this town really changed when COVID hit. Yeah. Okay, um, fifteen point five. Are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, fifteen point five. Access egress way location and spacing. The business will utilize an existing driveway to the site, which will be the entryway to the business. The existing driveway.
I think it's.
To the site will be the main access. And the existing driveway is over fifty feet. Okay, fifteen point six, internal vehicular circulation. We've had a lot of discussion about that. Anybody want to add anything there? All right, fifteen point seven, parking. Parking spaces required. Okay. This standard is met based on finding that the site plan shows two spaces for the house, two spaces for employees, three spaces for commercial harvesters, and two overflow spaces. I think we have, in our discussions, we've kind of come around to seeing that this may not be completely accurate, this, this parking space count. But I did speak with Margaret earlier this afternoon, because I wanted to know how many parking spaces are required for the business, right? And Margaret and I talked, and there's no, if you look at these, this use, there's nothing in the use that, that says, you know, clam buyers, wholesale clam buyers.
Closest would be the closest requirement.
We thought, we thought that, or we also thought business and professional structures. So with business and, what did we say the, the size of the building is?
We had talked about retail and commercial sales. I think business and professional structures implies offices.
You're right, that's right, I'm sorry.
Retail, yeah.
You're right.
But it's not really retail sales.
Because he has no retail customers.
No.
He's not selling anything.
And he's not selling anything.
It, it, nothing really, nothing really fits on this. So what did we calculate, Margaret? I had it in.
Um, if you use retail and commercial sales, it would be three spaces, three point five, I think.
Yeah, the building is fourteen by forty-five, so that's six hundred and thirty square feet, which equals three point five spots. And that was, I mean, even that is just based on, on guessing something here.
Yeah.
So I want to know, I just want to ask the board, is, what do you feel adequate parking is for this? How would you like to calculate it? Do you think it needs to be calculated? Are you satisfied with employee parking? How would you, I want to just get a feel from the board here.
I'm looking at the industrial public utilities warehouse of storage. I think that's gonna be the closest fit for this particular operation, because nothing else really, the more out there, it doesn't really fit that description.
But it's not a warehouse or storage.
No, it's industrial.
Yeah.
As close as you can get.
But it's also a commercial, it is a site for commercial sales, because the applicant is buying.
He's not selling.
He's not selling, but he's buying.
That's a wholesaler.
That is.
So again.
I just tried to go by your standard the best.
We don't really have one. I think that's what we're kind of trying to figure out.
How many employees were you planning on having? I don't remember whether you said that at the, at the site block.
No more than two or three. Just two.
Thank you.
So, I just want to say, if we exclude parking space number six, that we said is maybe halfway into First Road, we have several here. We have one, two, three, four, five, that's just for the building, and then we have the additional two parallel for the house.
Yeah.
So we have, we have plenty.
I'm, I agree with you. What I'm trying to do is get for the site plan and for the record, the number of parking spaces that we are going to put into this record.
Oh, okay.
And so I think we're, we're gonna say two, two employees and plus the owner. Can we have one conversation?
Sorry.
So two employees plus the owner would be three parking spaces.
Right.
Can we agree amongst ourselves in this site plan review that three parking spaces is adequate? Can we put that in the record?
You're not counting the clambers coming in for parking, were you? And I'm sorry, this is, this is what we were talking about, so, right.
I know, it's hard. It's, it's hard, because.
If it's three for the owner and two employees, then yes, three would be sufficient, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
But not three in total.
But Jim Harvard.
Just for employee count and the owner count.
Gotcha, gotcha. I see what you're saying.
And then an additional three for the business, right?
Right.
So we're talking six.
Total.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was looking, I'm still trying to visualize your guys coming in, the clambers, as to what they're bringing and how big whatever it is, just so that I can see for like the length of the parking spaces. Do they, does one require two, because it's two vehicles connected together? I mean, I don't, I've never seen clambers come in to deliver their clams.
It depends if they come in with a boat or not, ma'am. And the boats are usually just a small skiff, fourteen-foot skiff. They're not thirty feet long or whatever. And they're usually not there long. If they are, the other one will pull up beside them, or that guy will just pull his clams up and pull forward a little bit.
So we'd be looking at maybe twenty-five feet or something like that, you know, the average car, I don't know.
Yes, correct, ma'am.
Something like twenty-five feet.
Yeah, and, you know, when, when we're thinking of parking, we typically think of a retail situation where people are just gonna sit there and park.
Right, right.
This is really more of a drive-through.
Yeah.
Because they're just coming here long enough to unload the.
They're probably not there more than five to six minutes, each individual person.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So for, for this fifteen point, I just want to get this in the record. We, this should say, this standard is met based on the finding that three spaces are required for employees plus the owner, owner-operator, and three for, um.
Commercial harvesters.
Commercial harvesters. Thank you. Can we put that into the findings? Okay.
Yeah.
Jim Harvard, I just, a question for Jeff again. So you're, you're not expecting more than three people to be there at a time. And no one's gonna be backed up onto Route twenty-four. You're not gonna, you said six to twelve clambers are gonna come through there during the day to sell their clams to you. And it's gonna, but they're never gonna arrive all at the same time, so that you have a line of cars backed up onto Route twenty-four.
Jeff Janvin, no, they basically, there might be two, maybe three at once, but they're, they're coming and going at all different times, coming from different places. They could be coming from Freeport, they could be coming from Bailey's Island, they could be coming from Damascada.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We ready to move to fifteen point seven point two, layout and design?
Yeah.
Fifteen point eight, unless some, does any discussion, okay? Fifteen point eight, pedestrian circulation. Fifteen point nine, storm water management. Fifteen point ten, erosion control. Fifteen point eleven, water supply and groundwater protection. This is where someone from the public wanted to speak about wells.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm Noche again. I'm a retired U.S. Geological Survey geologist, and the wells in that area are contaminated with E. coli. Have you had the water tested?
Not yet, do I need to?
No, no. His well may be all right, but most of the wells in the area are contaminated. Yeah, mine is. Jeez. So, um, does it, does Tana Harpswell take into consideration the water and septic situation?
Well, yes, we do. And this gentleman, Mr. Janvin, has given us information from several different sources that show that there's a one thousand gallon tank on the west side of the house. There's a pump station.
Right, the tank is the cause of the problem. It was overflowing, because he, it was a crack house there.
Okay.
And the, they never bothered to pump the tank, it just flowed out onto the ground.
Well, hopefully that situation will be rectified, and that the applicant will not be operating in that capacity.
Okay, thank you.
We can't, we can't solve a problem from a user from the past, but I understand your concern.
Yeah, the groundwater is contaminated.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Jeff Janvin, what he's referring to was when, and whoever plowed the driveway, they crushed the D-box on the leachin field. I had that fixed by Mr. Weber. I was notified by the town, and I took care of that, ma'am.
Thank you.
I can confirm that, because I was in the code's office at the time.
Okay.
But that was a leach field on this property, but it served a different house, I believe, correct?
That's correct. And nobody is living at that house. I'd plan on redoing the house. So, but I will be, someone will.
I do have a question. We appreciate you submitted so much material to us, but it is, there's a lot. And I was looking at something from nineteen ninety-one, where there was, apparently, the holding tank did not have a wash-down drain. I, I have it here.
What are you referring to, ma'am? Which?
A site, this is for eighteen ninety-one, Certified Soils Analyst.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was at the, and you, there wasn't, this was, this was the former person, I think, who had the business. There was no wash-down drain.
That's correct, ma'am. The, that was all redone over.
That's what I was, I saw that the tank.
We had a tight tank put in, ma'am.
Right. But I didn't know whether the wash-down drain was still an issue, but you're saying it's a different tank, so it doesn't have that. I read Mr. Weber's stuff, but I'm not a plumber.
We, we built a whole new building there. All the plumbing goes directly into that tight tank.
Great, thank you.
It's a fifteen hundred gallon tank.
Yep.
Yeah, and the, the inspection that was done in April twenty twenty-five says the fifteen hundred gallon holding tank was approximately twenty-five percent full and holding liquid, obviously. The interior walls were inspected with a flashlight. The tank itself appeared to be in good structural condition. It is not in immediate need of service, and the high-water alarm was recently replaced by R.A. Weber.
Right, I saw that. It was the, that washed, I didn't know what that was. I knew that that was a problem back in nineteen ninety-one, which is why the individual was not, didn't get the permit.
Yeah.
Wasn't renewed. So I just wanted to make sure that that was okay, and it sounds like it is. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on fifteen point eleven? Fifteen point twelve, subsurface waste disposal. Fifteen point thirteen, utilities and essential services. Fifteen point four, natural buffering. Fifteen point fifteen, lighting. Fifteen point sixteen, water quality protection. Fifteen point seventeen, hazardous special and radioactive materials. Fifteen point eighteen, solid special and hazardous waste disposal. Fifteen point nineteen, historic and archaeological resources. Fifteen point twenty, floodplain management. Fifteen point twenty-one, technical and financial capacity. Fifteen point twenty-two, additional standards for Mitchell Field Marine Business District, which we'll be dealing with later.
Does apply.
Probably around nine o'clock. Okay, um, now, we have a motion that has been seconded to approve the, um, the application for Jeff Janren, saying that he meets the submission requirements for Section fourteen. It has been moved, seconded, we've had our discussion. And I'd like to ask the planner, if she could, to summarize the conditions that we talked about for conditions of approval. Can you do that?
I think that we.
I want to write these down, so that, so that when we make the motion, we've got them.
So for, do you guys want to vote on that first? Or do you, do you want to vote?
I just want, before I, before we vote on it, I'd like to just make sure we have this in order.
All right, so for the conditions would be, the applicant shall erect signs directing the one-way traffic and indicating the speed limit on the site prior to opening the business. And I would note that that probably, as your neighbor said, needs to be at least five feet off the side of the road. People, your customers will figure out pretty quickly the flow of the traffic, though. And then the applicant will submit a revised site plan which deletes or erases spot number, parking spot number six off the site plan.
And shows, um.
Oh, and, and indicates the accurate width of, of the traveling.
And that not indicates, and shows it.
And that's First Road, correct?
No, no, that where it says thirty-three feet.
On his property.
On his property.
You know, the thirty-three feet right here in the middle.
Yeah. That way we know what we're clearly talking about.
What it actually is, yeah.
Parking, where would you, on the interior lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we change the parking spaces too. Then we say three for employees and three for commercial harvesters.
Parking will be for three employees and three, do we call them, harvesters? Yeah. We have owner operator, was it three employees and owner-operator?
The total of three, owner-operator employees, so it could.
Two, two employees and owner-operator. Thank you. That's why I want to write these down.
Yeah.
Anything else that need to go in the final conditions? Okay, all right, now, so I would like to, the motion is.
Excuse me, uh, Bill Fall, Great Island. Just, I want to be clear with the. Just, I want to be clear with the parking, if there's a truck with a trailer and a boat on it, that is a bigger, that's two spots of parking it will be taking, just so you know.
We do know that.
I know it's a strange, you know, I, I get it, it's, doesn't fit anything, but.
It's kind of a sad thing that it doesn't fit anything, because we have so, so few of these folks left that we don't even have a standard for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I, I just have one other question. This goes back to, I forget which one, you know, the runoff and all that from water, and I mean.
We're not going to be able, no one at home will be able to hear you, sir.
Yep, we under.
Sorry, but.
It's all gravel runoff to the road. There's a storm drain that state finally had to put in, I don't know how many years ago, because of flooding to the house across the street. So they had to put a storm drain which goes out into the cove.
Yep.
So I'm worried about all the, anything coming off that driveway and Echo Shore Drive, which is all, it's all flowing into that sewer drain and going out into the cove, which used to be clamming, but it was closed down for many years until like, I don't know, eight years ago or 10 years ago.
Yeah, totally understand your.
So I'm just concerned about another safety for environmental concerns.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
If he was paving that lot, this would be a completely different.
I wouldn't want that, yes.
Right, exactly, thank you, sir.
I did, I did think of one other change that we made, and that's the flow of the traffic.
Right.
Well, they'll enter onto the lot in the driveway and exit on First Road and out Echo Shore.
Will enter and to the applicant's driveway and exit on Echo Shore.
Yeah, not First Road. We're avoiding First Road.
Well, they have to go onto Echoes to get to First.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and there will be signage.
First Road, then back.
Right.
Right.
Did I say that backwards?
Yeah.
Yeah.
First to Echoes.
It's first anyway.
And we'll exit on first two Echoes.
Yeah.
First two Echoes, okay. All right, here we go, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion? It's been seconded, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Eileen Downs, Great Island. I just wanted to ask, because Jeff, I just want to understand your business a little bit better. So can you give me like a description, are we talking seven days a week, sometimes two times in a day, that this, that you'd have activity, is that correct?
Jeff Janvin. Clam diggers pretty much dig seven days a week. Different times, sometimes they get two tides. But if they get two tides, they only get a partial. So usually I'm only buying for two hours a day when that happens. An early morning tide and then a late tide.
Yeah.
That is, you know, it's a, it's a good point, this is a commercial fishing zone. And we are, we are very respectful of that, so, you know, we understand your concern and as a resident, but it's in a commercial fishing zone, so we support our local fishermen. It's just got to be that way. Okay, anybody else? Okay, motions on the floor, it's been seconded, we've had discussion, all those in favor? All right, thank you, the application is complete. So, does anybody want to do conclusions of law? Anybody want to do that?
Thank you, wrote them all out, didn't you?
I don't have them written down.
In light of these findings of fact with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record, I move that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that the application of Jeff Janvin to reopen a previously existing wholesale shellfish buying operation located at 42, Lot 42 on Tax Map 50 meets the standards of the Site Plan Review Ordinance. The planning board approves the application with the following standard conditions of approval, or with the following conditions of approval. The approval is based on the approved plans and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval and as conditions of approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. This approval is not final until such time as final plans showing all conditions of approval and any waivers granted have been signed by the Chair of the Planning Board. This approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plans, proposals and supporting documents except de minimis changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards is subject to review and approval of the Planning Board prior to implementation. The applicant shall obtain all necessary state and federal approvals before the applicant commences any land use activity pursuant to the site plan approval and shall comply with the requirements of those permits and approvals. One copy of the notice of decision must be recorded by the applicant in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds within 45 days of the approval and the book and page number provided to the code officer. Failure by the applicant to record the notice of decision shall void the site plan approval. Site Plan Ordinance, Section 13.3.2. This is number six. The flow of traffic will enter into the applicant's driveway driveway and exit onto First Road and then Echo Shores Road. This would be number seven. The applicant will erect signs directing one-way traffic and indicating speed limits prior of 10 miles per hour? Five miles per hour?
Ma'am, I'll put a sign up for five miles an hour, I don't think anybody's going to go 10 miles an hour around there. I think that's a little bit too extreme.
Okay, five miles per hour limit prior to opening the business. Eight, the applicant will submit a revised site plan which deletes parking spot number six and shows accurate width of the driveway and parking areas on the interior lot. Parking numbers have been calculated for two employees plus the owner operator plus three harvesters for a total of six parking spaces.
Do we still have six, though?
No, he had nine originally.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
No.
Just one question, Bill Fall, Great Island. That signage for direction has to be set back.
Yeah.
Away from visibility, blocking visibility, so, just so you know.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm sure that once the harvesters start to come, that they'll figure it out, I'll put the word out. So when they start coming, that, they'll come in that way, too.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just a question for information, the harvesters that you have, do you know all of them, are they regulars or?
I know a lot of them.
Oh, okay.
Like I said, I've bought for 40 years, some men have passed away, some are coming, but I know, I know a good handful of them.
So it won't take very long before those, those harvesters are going to understand what you, what you're expecting.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's on the table, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Woo, thank you for your patience, thank you for your input.
Thanks.
Thank you very much to the planning board, it's been a long process for me and I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And to my neighbors, I'll do the best I can to keep everything under control.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeff, what'll happen?
Good luck to you.
Next is, I'll prepare a notice of decision that the Chair will sign, we'll get it to you, and then you will have it recorded at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. Yeah, I'll send you some instructions.
So, do I have to come to another meeting and bring this back before you?
No, it's, yeah, it's in the conditions of approval, so.
Oh, just make it up and bring it to you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And a lobster sandwich won't do. Okay, that was a two-hour meeting, does anyone need to take a two-minute break? Okay.
It was, I didn't feel like it was that long.
Well, in their defense, they were the last on a very long agenda last time they came, and everybody sat through a very two-hour-long meeting last time.
Yeah, this is, this has been a lot of work. Planning board's a lot of work. Okay. The next item on the agenda is James and Sarah Merriman, they are not here. And at the last meeting, we asked for some information which has not been provided, so I am going to make a motion that we table this application tonight.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor, thank you.
I just want to give you a quick update.
Yeah.
I talked to Kevin Clark of Sightlines, he had, was still waiting on a legal opinion. And they're exploring other ideas, like Amy's idea at the last meeting to buy other land, so. He's still scheming on something, but he wasn't ready to present to us yet.
Good, that's great, thank you. All right, the next application is Ors and Bailey's Island Fire Department.
I'm going, I'm not going to vote because, you know, I'm on the board.
Oh, okay.
So I'll just sit here.
You could, you could fill us in if we have any questions. Okay, this is Agenda Item 250701, the Ors Island Fire Department. It's located at 1600 Harpswell Neck Road. It's on Tax Map 32, Lot 6, and it's owned by the nonprofit Ors and Bailey Island Fire Department. The lot contains just under one acre of land at 40,778 square feet. It's serviced by Harpswell Island Road, and I'm not sure why this was put in there, but across the street from the Ors Island Cemetery, which may or may not be convenient for the fire department.
Oh.
Sometimes.
I had to put that in.
That was, that was, that was low.
All right, the lot is improved with 3,518 square foot commercial building, one, and it's a two-story building, it houses firefighting apparatus, one ambulance downstairs, crew quarters built in 1985 and renovated in 2017. Also on the property is a two-story barn-style commercial building primarily used for storage. That building was built in 2006. One thing I want to just draw your attention to is when it, the, the Ors and Bailey Island Fire Department came before the planning board in 2006, the proposal to build the storage barn was approved, and in the approval, it was required to vegetate 900 square feet of existing impervious lot coverage because it was under or over the allowable lot coverage.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm not sure by how much, but I'm sure Margaret can tell us. Okay, the applicant is proposing to construct a handicap ground. We might ask ourselves, why are we here? And that's actually a fairly decent question, because this probably could have been approved under a minor site plan. So I want to thank the board and the applicant for, you know, we could have probably done that, but we'll try and, try and keep it, keep, make it fast here. All right, I'm just going to move this thing along. So step one is to look at conformance with submission requirements and some of those submission requirements are requested in the form of waivers. So I will accept a motion for the waivers that are in the findings of fact, if anyone would like to make a motion.
I move that the planning board finds that the application of Ors and Bailey Island Fire Department for an amendment to an approved site plan meets the submission requirements of Section 14 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, subject to the granting of the waivers as noted in the recommendation of the planner.
Well done.
I'm listening, I'm listening.
Yeah, but will I get a second, that's.
I'll second.
Any, any discussion? No, any discussion? All those in favor, thank you. All right, so, all the waivers, step two, findings of fact, conformance with Site Plan Review standards. I will entertain a motion with regard to conformance with Site Plan Review standards, if anyone would like to make one.
I move.
Thank you, Dan.
That the planning board finds the application of the Ors and Bailey Island Fire Department meets the approval standards of Section 15 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, based on the finding that the standards were met in the 2006 Site Plan Amendment and no changes are proposed. Those standards as set out in the recommendation by the planner.
Thank you. Thank you, I will.
I'll second that.
Second that motion, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, those were standards that are not applicable to the application. Standards that are applicable, applicable to the application. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the planning board finds the application of the Ors and Bailey Island Fire Departments meets the approval standards of Section 15 of the Site Plan Review Ordinance, based on the findings that are incorporated in the motion by reference as set forth by the town planner.
Second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Conclusions of law. Laurie, would you like to read the conclusions of law?
I don't do good at that.
In light of these findings of fact with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record, I move that the planning board reaches the following conclusions as written in the findings of fact and conclusions of law by the planner dated July 8, 2025, items one through six.
Second it.
Wow.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, the, the only thing I was wondering, I was so amazed by your amazing way that you stated things, Dan, that I was kind of like, ugh. But I wondered, I think it was important that there's going to be less impervious surface than there was before. And I wondered, under the 15.1 dimensional requirements, whether it would be worth saying the lot will be more conforming in regards to lot coverage by more than 200 square feet, because current impervious surface will be decreased. I mean, to me, that was pretty important.
Those will be in the findings, right?
You want that last thing?
I just wondered whether that would be worth writing in there.
200 square feet because, gosh, we just voted on this.
Um, do you want to, I'm.
Well, I guess I screwed that up.
I think if we just note that as, note that for the record.
Okay, yeah, noted for the record, because I think that is important.
Because it isn't a standard of approval, but it's an important thing to note that for the record.
That's a good idea.
Okay, thank you for making, you had my idea and put it in the right spot, but, no, I thought that was an important thing that was being done.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you could put in what the, what the current status is and what it will be after the impervious surface has been removed, so that we have a baseline and a number.
Sorry, I was out of order.
No, that was fine.
No, that's fine.
That's good, all right. Moving right along, the town of Harpswell.
We're good to go.
So she'll be, you're all approved, you didn't even have to get out of your chair.
You're, yeah.
So she'll be coming back to us with another application, for those of you who are not at the site walk. They are going to do next, a little tiny similar-sized project at the schoolhouse, but you run into the same impervious lot coverage situation there, so.
So are you saying I can do a smaller application?
Maybe next time.
I, I think you should talk with Margaret about that, because it may, it seems to me like it should go through minor site plan review, staff review.
The same size application, just a different. The same size application, just a different group of people.
Yeah, it just happens sometimes during the day. It takes a much shorter time. It's a much less formal process. I mean, it does have a formal legal process, but it's much less honorous. Thank you.
All right. So we will get together a notice of decision. Amy will sign it, we'll get it notarized, and you will have it recorded at the Registry of Deeds. It's in Portland. You can mail stuff to them with a check, or you can do an online submission, which I recently learned about.
Oh, nice.
I had no idea.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yes.
We'll see you soon.
I'll take 15 of those.
15 of what?
Those applications.
Oh, I know about.
I know, really.
I know.
Now we have a new one.
All right, next one, our last thing, is the town of Harpswell subdivision amendment for Mitchell Field. I'll ask the planner if she has, or the town administrator, if they have anything you'd like to present.
I would love it. Actually, I want to just commend you all on what a great job you do reviewing the applications. I got to witness that personally tonight. And I, I think you were fair to both the applicant and to the abutters who were bringing their concerns forward. So I thought you did a great job.
This is harder than the Select Board.
It, it's different. It's very different. They're hard in their own ways.
Yeah, they are. That is very true.
I do also, so I want to introduce myself, Kristi Ayana, the town administrator. And Don Miskel is here. He's the town steward at Mitchell Field. It may be hard for you to see this, but I know you all have it in your packet. Around 2011, I think, the town voters created the Marine Business District at Mitchell Field. It's had a little bit of a reorientation more recently. But we signed the first lease with a company called Running Tide, and that was in Lot A. And Don can show you Lot A. It's near the waterfront, and they have the ability to, to use, you know, the vote launch when we put that in. And they have put, Running Tide put all of its money into refurbishing the building. The town did not put any money into any infrastructure there. As part of the deed with Running Tide, they were supposed to implement a subsurface wastewater system.
Can I just stop for a second?
Yeah, sorry.
Can, can we have one meeting? Can we help? Anybody? Does anybody need any help? Do you, did you not have the?
Yeah, it disappeared from the website. That's all.
I'm happy to share mine with you.
Well, I have one now.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
We now have entered a new five-year lease with a company called Mary Meeting Shellfish. And we are adamant that there will be a well and septic system serving the lot, that the taxpayers of Harpswell will not be paying for the installation of that or the cost of that. However, we have been informed by the lessee that there's room for the well on Lot A, but there's not room for the septic system, an in-ground septic system. They currently have four to six employees, and it is a requirement of the lease that they have to do this. So we are coming before the Planning Board and asking for the creation of a new 20,000-square-foot lot. That is the minimum lot requirement in the Marine Business District. It will be used solely, at this time, for the septic system. There has been no other proposal for development on that parcel, which is now called Parcel D. And it's about, it's less than half an acre. Point four seven, perhaps, I think, or it's on the drawing.
20,000 square feet.
Yeah, 20,000 square feet. So again, this is to allow the lessee to meet the requirement of both well and septic. And the septic has to be on another lot. It just won't fit on Lot A. There's not enough room. Questions?
I guess you've been very clear. The application's very clear.
And obviously, we want to thank Margaret McIntyre for putting that together with our assistants. And we did hire a surveyor, Pat Hardy. He's been doing the surveys at Mitchell Field since the property was turned over to the town, so he's very familiar with that parcel.
Thank you. Very good.
Great. Don, did you want to add anything?
Not really. Don Miskel, Mitchell Field steward. Just for information, we talked about Lot A and Lot D. Lot B is an additional section of the Mitchell Field Marine Business District that they have an option on. And Lot C is the cell tower subdivision.
Thank you. What a beautiful spot. Okay.
I just have a, this is just a basic question, but this, this septic field is just going to serve the, is it Mary Meeting?
Correct.
Just that particular group, right? So it's going to be sized specifically for the number of employees at that particular business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna try and do what you did.
I will support you.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna do it!
Do you want me to hear from the public? Very good.
Actually, I do have a quick, it was brought during the site walk, and I just want it for public record. What if the business closes or does not renew the lease, then what happens to that lot? Does it stay forever attached to?
Well, I mean, the town owns the lot, so we will ultimately become the owner of that infrastructure. Yeah, that's the intention, if they can't continue to, to use the property. Now, they could decide they don't want to use it anymore, and there might be another business that comes in. Same way it happened when Running Tide left and Mary Meeting Shellfish came in. So you just never know. But it seems like this is a good fit, and it's very focused on the hatchery piece, where Running Tide was starting to expand into carbon sequestration and kind of moving away from the hatchery work. So I think this business is really suited for that location.
You had mentioned it at the site walk. I just wanted it for record more than anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that the Planning Board grants the identified waivers and finds that the application of the town of Harpswell for a new lot within the existing Mitchell Field subdivision meets the submission requirements of Section 8.3 of the subdivision ordinance and is therefore determined to be a complete application.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I move that the Planning Board finds that the application of the town of Harpswell to create an additional lot within the Mitchell Field subdivision meets the applicable state standards based on the findings which are incorporated into this motion by reference dated factors, or stated Item A factors subject only to state statutory revisions, Agenda Item 250702.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? I move that the Planning Board finds that the application of the town of Harpswell to create an additional lot within Mitchell Field subdivision meets the applicable, applicable state and local standards based on the findings under Item B factors subject to both state statutory review and local standards for the findings of fact dated 250702.
Which are incorporated.
Which are incorporated into this motion by reference. Thank you.
Did you say, did I say, someone say second?
Second it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Now, where, where did it go?
Page 13.
Oh, page 14 is what I've got. Page 14?
Bottom 13.
And C, local standards not applicable to the application.
Oh, page 13. Go, go for it, Dan.
I move that the Planning Board finds that the standards of Section 9 of the subdivision ordinance, as noted by the town planner, are not applicable to this application.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Take it away, Dan.
I move that the Planning Board finds that the application of the town of Harpswell to create an additional lot in the Mitchell Field subdivision meets the approval standards of Section 9 of the Harpswell subdivision ordinance based on the findings of fact by the town planner, which are incorporated into this motion by reference.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Approval of the application and conclusions of law. Help me out with this, Dan. I move that in light of these facts, with consideration given to the supporting documentation and the record, that the Planning Board reaches the conclusions specified by the town planner in the findings of fact.
Does that cover it?
And.
I move, let's work on that. I move that in light of these facts, with consideration given to the supporting documentation and the record, that the Planning Board reaches the following conclusions. The Planning Board finds that the town of Harpswell has met the standards of the town of Harpswell subdivision. The Planning Board approves the application to create a new lot within the Mitchell Field subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval as written by the town planner.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
We're done.
Dan, I'm curious. How come sometimes we have to read all of those?
We don't. We're slowly kind of figure, sometimes we. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, the reason why we sometimes do it is that there are some items which really require us to look more deeply into it, such as parking and things like that. You know, but for things that are fairly standard, we rely on the town planner to do the work. We review the proposed findings. And if there are no questions from the, from the public, it's, it's an indication that we have done our job. So we can incorporate all that in by reference.
Okay.
So we are making specific findings, but they're the findings that have been recommended due to the due diligence of the town planner.
That's why, that's why I go through and spend up to four hours on some applications to make sure that I know what Margaret is recommending and that I can make the motions or make sure that the motions, somebody makes the motions that are, cover all the bases.
I want to know why we always refer to Mitchell Field in applications that have absolutely nothing to do with Mitchell Field.
It's in the site plan review.
It's in the ordinance.
Why do we keep having, I mean, that makes no sense.
Yeah, no, we, we have to say that, that that paragraph, that section of the site plan review ordinance is not applicable because it isn't a part of Mitchell Field. If it would be easier if there were a separate section of the ordinance that just dealt with Mitchell Field alone, but.
Am I the only one that thinks that that doesn't make any sense?
It does seem.
Thank you.
It does seem.
Just checks the bottom.
It seems redundant and ridiculous.
But there are some special conditions related to Mitchell Field.
And there is a Mitchell Field business zone.
Oh, yeah. This made perfect sense. All the references to Mitchell Field made perfect sense. But there are other ones. I'm thinking, why are we talking about Mitchell Field when it has nothing to do with Mitchell?
Because everybody loves Mitchell Field.
What we should do is.
It's not just the shoreline, because there's parts of it that's farther out, so it hits all the zones.
What we should do is what we did tonight, which is just say, figure out some way to just say that Mitchell Field is, you know, is not applicable and move on and.
Maybe just make a separate motion that says, all references to, as part of the, you know, just like we do with the waivers, all references in the, in the ordinance related to Mitchell Field are not applicable to that.
We could do that before the section where standards are applicable. We could do one that just says the standard is met because it's not applicable.
That'll work, yeah.
It just seems to be confusing. Yeah, how can we make it easier?
You're right.
So now that that's approved, we'll go back to Pat Hardy, and he will put all the conditions of approval on the plan. You guys will sign the plan at the next meeting, like you did tonight, and then we'll record it at the registry.
Okay. Sounds good. You're welcome.
All right, consideration.
You guys didn't do all that fun tonight.
Consideration of minutes of the 17th and 18th meetings. I think I made some notes, just mostly typos for you, Margaret.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I just, I was only really able to, to skim them, so I don't even feel like I can. I shouldn't really vote on the first one anyway. I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I did listen to it, or tried, but it was a terrible, this is where I was like, I can't hear. But the feedback was important. That way we knew where the gaps are. Right, right. So I'm, I, I will read them more carefully, but in terms of facts, I can't offer anything. I might find, you know, the English teacher could find typos. It's always possible, but.
Well, then I move that those minutes, those two meetings be approved, subject to the minor.
De minimis changes.
De minimis changes.
Whoa, I love that, de minimis.
We didn't use that today.
I'll second your motion. All those in favor?
We usually use that every time.
I was almost gonna say, subject to the scrivener errors.
Oh, we like the de minimis, you know.
So I. You must be impotent to use that kind of language.
I must be what?
Impotent. An impotent man.
He's just, he's just using his vocabulary, that's all. Some new vocabulary words.
So, really fast.
Yep.
There is a comp plan task force meeting on next Tuesday, July 22, at the Kellogg Church Fellowship Hall at 6:00 PM. It's the final comp plan meeting before the public hearing, which will be held on Saturday, August 16. Anybody wants to come? You're welcome to join.
Okay. Thank you.
Last thing is, I asked Margaret to copy LD 1829 for us. I asked that folks read through this and.
1829, it's stapled with the other one.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
And the 1751 is.
I was wondering, it did seem.
1751 is stapled to it.
Okay.
Oh, it is. Okay.
They're both there.
Um, so, I think it might behoove us to have a workshop on these. And I know Margaret hasn't really had time to digest the stuff. And I know that Matt has asked that some of our state reps come to the Select Board to go over this. Okay.
There'll probably be a workshop.
A workshop.
And we also, Kristi and I discussed perhaps having Aga from our attorney's office, Drummond Woodsum, come and do a workshop.
Does she circulate the memo that?
I have not, no.
So they typically have summarized aspects of the law? I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Mary Ann wants you to go to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
I think, I think I, I just, just for.
I have, I have some correspondence that I've gathered. There's one from Drummond Woodsum. There's one from the Main Association of Planners, so I have, I have a little bit of information gathered to, to send out to comp plan people, planning board people, housing committee people, because it kind of touches on, these issues touch on all three committees.
I think the Planning Board is required to attend a workshop.
Yeah.
On those, I mean, it was a little confusing when it said, within, what, 180 days of appointment, but.
But I think it's gonna take them a couple years to set up those trainings.
Well, I looked for them, because of course I was very interested to find out, but I couldn't find any references to any trainings. I mean, they haven't created the training, but we have to go.
One of the things that strikes me about this, and I, we're not, we don't need to get into it, but we are, under this 1829, we are prohibited by law from exercising certain.
Jurisdiction, yeah.
Jurisdiction. We're prohibited.
With certain planning board, what?
Jurisdictions.
Uh huh, yeah.
There's certain things that we are. Certain things that we are, you know, it's really, it's having, going to have an effect on local planning board.
We had asked Kristi to come up to the board to talk about what she was, when you were sitting down, you made a comment, and that's why we asked her to come forward.
Yeah. So I mean, I think there is a lot of interest in how these new statutes may impact Harpswell. The summary from Drummond Woodsum, I thought, was quite good. It said, look, this is a very complex, complicated issue, and it's going to take us time to dissect it. So you, you know, there's going to take, we need time for everybody to understand what does this mean and what are the implications to Harpswell. And one of the areas, there was a chart, and it showed if you don't have public septic and you don't have, um, public water, then you're, there's certain...
Or end of growth area.
And, you know, that certain things don't apply. So I, I think, you know, there's some areas that we won't be held to certain standards. But yeah, we're all trying to figure this out and what it means. So I don't think you're, no one's an expert. Even our law firm is not an expert yet on interpreting this law.
Yeah. Well, some of the stuff that I've read as a former professional land use planner, I don't think it was very well thought out, because it's going to have a lot of unintended consequences for...
And then they usually try to fix those, right?
And then they try to fix those.
Snowballs.
Yeah.
So we will try to set up some mechanism to make sure you're better informed, and that includes the select board, too.
Yeah.
We haven't quite figured out what that's going to look like yet and when.
Maybe in September.
Yeah.
Since everybody's busy in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, September, maybe.
Okay. Well, thank you for copying this.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, so read it and...
Read it and weep.
Read it and weep. So I declare this meeting adjourned, adjourned.
Yay!